Accused Democratic members of Congress of trying to scare veterans and his employees by saying his agency is eliminating medical staff. A VA employee who requested anonymity for fear of retribution told NPR that stress related to uncertainty about their jobs is already starting to indirectly affect patient care. For NPR News, I'm Katia Mendoza in Tucson.
Every long-form story on a topic that piques your interest, every music feature that introduces you to a new artist, every discovery you find thanks to this public radio station is supported by listener donations. That support includes cars, trucks, and SUVs. I'm Amy Martinez. Donate your vehicle now, and the next time you hear something great, you can shout, "Hey, my car did that." Here's how.
Go to radioiq.org and click the Vehicle Donation banner at the top of the page.
As the U.S. military faces a recruiting crisis, it needs more qualified women than ever. So why is Defense Secretary Pete Hegseth canceling a program supporting them?
Whether you think it's woke or not is irrelevant. Our strategic environment is much more difficult. And so, cutting off pathways for recruiting and retaining forces, it doesn't make sense to me.
That's coming up Monday on Point.
Weekday evenings at 7:00 on Radio IQ. Funding for Here and Now comes from Olin College of Engineering. Their campus is a living laboratory where students experiment and take risks in a hands-on engineering education. At Olin, they believe engineering is for everyone. Olin.edu. And BetterHelp, committed to supporting mental health through therapy and helping clients find balance. Clients are matched with one of 30,000 therapists for online therapy from anywhere at betterhelp.com/public.
It's Here and Now. About 13% of homes in the U.S. use a heat pump. They're more energy-efficient and climate-friendly than traditional heating and cooling systems like a gas furnace or a boiler. But a geothermal heat pump may actually be a better option, especially for homes in the West where geothermal energy is abundant. Colorado Public Radio's Sam Brash tells us how the Rocky Mountain State is trying to harness it.
On a frigid afternoon last December, Jim and Hillary Denton watched with excitement as a compact drilling rig tore into their small backyard in downtown Denver.
Okay, this is pretty loud, so speak loudly.
Yep. They're drilling right now on the second well there.
The rig hooks up to what looks like a miniature battlefield tank. It uses compressed air to bore two 400-foot holes. Once complete, they'll be attached at the bottom into a loop.
And then it will pop through the wall in our basement.
And then into a heat pump. The machine works by moving heat indoors to keep residents warm in the winter. In the summer, it moves it out to keep them cool. That works well enough with outside air, which is how far more common air-source heat pumps operate. But if you've been outside, you know the temperature changes pretty often. That's not true just below the Earth's surface. Down there, it stays about 50 degrees Fahrenheit. Geothermal heat pumps reach underground, which makes them a lot more energy-efficient.
I'm so glad you could tell by your feet.
Sure. I know it's not that important. Inside, the Dentons are renovating their home, which was first built during Colorado's 1880 silver boom. He said this whole heating and cooling system, it's not going to be cheap.
The total cost is like $77,000.
The cost comes down with a federal tax credit.
But with the 30% tax credit, it will be $54,000.
But even with the discount, $50,000 is on the upper end of what's standard for a ground-source heat pump. Jim and his wife Hillary are both software engineers, and that's how they can afford to go geothermal.
We have, you know, a lot of privilege, so we can be the people on the cutting edge, which will then hopefully reduce the cost for other people down the line.
A recent U.S. Department of Energy analysis found roughly 1% of homes in the U.S. have a geothermal heat pump. Will Tour, the director of the Colorado Energy Office, says if more households adopt these super-efficient appliances, it could make it far easier to shift to a cleaner grid.
As we move to more and more use of things like electric heat pumps, the more of those that are ground-source or geothermal heat pumps, the less the impact will be on those peak electricity needs in the winter.
In the last few years, Colorado Governor Jared Polis has approved incentives to support home geothermal systems, but there often isn't a robust enough workforce to install them. And that's caught the attention of one important company.
This is the geothermal heating and cooling system, heat pump itself.
This is Kathy Hanoun. She's the co-founder and president of Dandelion Energy.
When I co-founded the company in 2017, our mission was to bring geothermal into the mainstream and make it just a standard product for homes.
After launching on the East Coast, Dandelion is bringing its vision to Colorado. The company is now partnering with Lennar, one of the country's biggest home builders, to install geothermal heat pump systems at more than 1,500 new homes.
This will be the largest deployment of residential heating and cooling systems in U.S. history, and it's happening in Colorado.
The work is just beginning. At each site in one future subdivision, there's a pale-yellow dandelion rig, drilling geothermal wells before home construction gets started. Hanoun says that's far cheaper and easier in new developments.
When you install 1,500 of something in a row, you can just optimize your processes so that it's much less expensive than a one-off.
And those one-off systems, Hanoun isn't surprised that installing one can cost upwards of $50,000 in Colorado.
That's been the norm in the industry in the past, and I think one reason why geothermal has traditionally been more of a niche luxury product.
Once it's gained a foothold, Hanoun says Dandelion might start offering its services to Colorado homeowners, not just home builders. That also depends on Washington, D.C. President Trump hasn't tried to shrink or eliminate federal tax credits for home geothermal systems, at least so far. If he does, Hanoun says her company might stay focused on new developments, where the economics make a little more sense. But both business models have strong support in Colorado. At a ribbon-cutting ceremony outside of the new development, Governor Jared Polis says his administration sees a bright future for home geothermal.
It's good for our economy, good for homeowners, good for climate, good for our air quality.
And he says he'll keep working to make it more accessible in Colorado. For Here and Now, I'm Sam Brash.
Okay, before we go, you may have noticed a familiar voice on the air today. Asma Khalid is back with us in the hosting chair. You probably know her voice because she covers, hey, Asma, she covers the White House for NPR. Not an easy job, so we feel very lucky to have her and her expertise alongside us for the next few months, Asma.
Yes, and I will say, look, the White House, it is an awesome privilege of a job to cover, but I very much relish the opportunity to just sort of talk about things that are not political all the time. So I hope you all give me a chance to do that.
We're going to keep you busy, I promise.
Looking forward to it.
Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Peter O'Dowd in Phoenix.
And I'm Asma Khalid in Washington, D.C.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and your NPR station, and from Rhodes Scholar, celebrating 50 years of transformative learning adventures for adults in over 100 countries. Learn more at rhodescholar.org/explore.
Public radio is in uncharted waters. The Trump administration has issued an executive order to stop federal funding going to NPR. That money supports stations on a local level so that they can continue to provide fact-based news and information along with vital emergency resources. To find out more about what you can do, go to radioiq.org and click the Protect Public Media Funding banner. Let your voice be heard in support of the programs you enjoy on Radio IQ.
China is now trying to save itself, trying to save its economy by ramping up exports to the rest of the world. And that has real consequences for any other country with a manufacturing sector, whether it's Brazil, or Mexico, or Germany, or Japan, or South Korea, or the United States.
I'm Natalie Kettroev. That's Today on the Daily from the New York Times.
here in the City Council Chamber, beginning at 2:00 P.M. As a friendly reminder, City Council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RVTV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7:00 P.M. and Saturdays from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 P.M. and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/ronokva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. This time, I'll ask our Clerk, Ms. McCoy, to please call the roll.
Mr. Nash?
Here.
Mr. Volleson?
Here.
Ms. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Hagan?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones is not here today. Vice Mayor McGuire?
Here.
And Mayor Cobb?
Here. Ms. Sanchez Jones has been representing our city in Saint-Lô, France, on the occasion of the 80th anniversary of the end of the war. And we're grateful for her being able to be present there. This afternoon, our invocation will be delivered by Milton Hardy Jr., Associate Pastor of Greater Prayer Temple, and then I will follow with the Pledge of Allegiance. Invite us to stand.
Let us pray. Gracious and sovereign God, we come before you today acknowledging our need for your wisdom, your peace, and your guidance. Today, we face hard decisions, decisions that affect our citizens, our neighborhoods, our children, and our future. Give each member of this council discernment beyond their own understanding. Help us to listen with humility, speak with compassion, and lead with courage. Remind us that leadership is a trust, and that stewardship of this city's resources is a sacred responsibility. Where there is disagreement, let there be grace. Where there is uncertainty, let faith rise. And where there is fear, grant us peace. Lord, bless our city, bless every resident, every employee, every family represented by the decisions made today. May the outcome of this meeting reflect not only what is necessary, but what is just and wise in your sight. In Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all again for attending this afternoon. Today, City Council will be considering the following items for action in connection with the city's recommended 2526 fiscal year budget, effective July 1, 2025, along with other related items. City Council conducted public hearings on April 21 to receive public comments regarding the recommended fiscal year budget, in addition to community meetings two weeks prior to that. We also, during that public hearing on the 21st, heard feedback from the community related to the proposed increase of the food and beverage tax and proposed tax rate on real estate. The public hearings were open and closed that night, and we had over 60 speakers. So again, throughout this process, which for several of us on council started last fall, this is an annual budget cycle process, and intensively began when we received the proposed budget from the city manager on March 3. I appreciate everyone's careful attention and thought, research, preparation for where we have arrived today. All of this has been fully vetted. We've had multiple conversations. Today is our opportunity as council to make a decision, not only based on the budget, but on the other items that I'll bring forward today. Our second item on the agenda is the introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. First, we have, and this is just a point of information, there's no action necessary on this item, we do have a certificate of the Director of Finance advising that funds required for the 2526 general, stormwater utility, civic facilities, parking, risk management, school general, school fund, and grant fund budgets will be available for appropriation for the fiscal year July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026. All right, our first item for action is the reaffirmation of the real estate tax rate. We do have one measure and ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion and a second on this ordinance. Move the ordinance?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance adopting and reaffirming the real property tax rate as set forth in Article 2 of Chapter 32 of the Code of the City of Roanoke, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any discussion by council? Mr. Hagan?
Yeah, I have some concerns about the fact that we have increased, or that the assessed values have increased about 8%, and we are not doing anything to lower this. Thank you.
Noted. Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, I'll have you call the roll, please.
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Nay.
Ms. Vice Mayor McGuire?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye. And the ordinance passes. Item number two is the adoption of fiscal year 26 Fee Compendium. There is one measure and ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion and a second. Move the ordinance?
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance adopting the City of Roanoke's electronic fee compendium for the 2025-26 fiscal year to be maintained by the Director of Finance, reflecting certain fees, rates, penalties, and charges made by the city, providing for an effective date and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Any discussion by council on this matter? Mr. Spencer?
If I could, Mr. Mayor, this is just something that's a little bit unique. We've been doing it the last couple of years, where we adopt the Fee Compendium every year. Just for the public's notice, there's only one change, and that's dealing with the fire EMS fees. And I also just wanted to appreciate and thank Trinity for his help in taking over the Fee Compendium this year. Made it go very smoothly for our office, so just wanted that known. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the ordinance is adopted. Item three is the adoption of the annual general stormwater utility, civic facilities, parking, risk management, school general, school fund services, school food services, and grant fund appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026. And we have one measure, a budget ordinance. Move the ordinance? All right, thank you. Have a second.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance adopting the annual general stormwater utility, civic facilities, parking, risk management, school general, and school food services fund appropriations of the City of Roanoke for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Discussion or comments by council? Mr. Volleson?
I have some comments I'd like to read out. Over the past year, this council has undertaken a change in administrative leadership that we believe will lead to a more responsive, transparent, and effective administration of our government. During the transition time between city managers, the council was informed of past mismanagement of the budget process. Previous leaders used vacancy savings to cover funding gaps, did not budget overtime for public safety, and deferred maintenance on roughly $25 million of items, including 14 elevators and $6.7 million worth of, million dollars' worth of air handlers, among many other very important things that we need. It is not an understatement to say that I, just like many of our citizens, was shocked to find out the financial state of our city. Unfortunately, a lack of transparency by the previous administration led me to believe that we were doing well with no issues. We now know that was not the case. While these issues affirm the council's decision to change leadership, it also means we must make up for the previous lack of appropriate budgeting. I want to commend Dr. Patton, Ms. Turner, Ms. Lindsay, and their staffs for the working long hours to make sure we could build a transparent budget that will begin to get our city back on track. I believe that the collaborative spirit created by Ms. Turner and her staff has allowed the administration and council to work together to mitigate the fiscal impacts to citizens and businesses in Roanoke as best we can. One of council's choices this fiscal year is to ensure Ms. Turner has a solid foundation to ensure for better fiscal health of our city. This budget was also created while we learned of the self-inflicted wounds to our national and state economies under Republican leadership. We now have to deal with consequences of tariffs, continued inflation, and large budget cuts that have threatened our economy, to put our economy into a recession. I want to thank the citizens of Roanoke, and especially the restaurant community, for your patience and understanding. I will continue to work with my colleagues and Ms. Turner to improve our city's fiscal state and make sure Roanoke remains a wonderful city in which to live, work, play, visit, and thrive.
Thank you, Mr. Volleson. Others? Ms. Powers?
Yes, I'll ditto everything you said about how hard everything was this past year, and I too want to say how much I appreciate our city staff, all the work that you've had to do this year to get us to this point. And going forward, as we start the new fiscal year, what I would hope that we would see is, as we get into each quarter, to get back into the budget and look at especially the areas that we have had to appropriate these other, this other money to make up for deferred maintenance, the elevator repairs, the overtime, and the temp services. I would like to make sure that we are staying on track as we get through each quarter, that we could see, okay, where are we? What have we done so far with the money that we have started to take to get us to this point, so that each quarter, we know that we're on track? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. Other comments? Okay, Ms. McCoy, I'll ask you to call the roll, please.
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Nay.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Our next item is the endorsement of the capital improvement program update from fiscal year 26 to fiscal year 2030. We have one measure, a resolution. Move the resolution?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution endorsing the update to the capital improvement program submitted by the city manager in the City Council Agenda Report of May 12, 2025.
Thank you. Any comments or discussion by council? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the resolution passes. Item five is the prepared food and beverage tax increase. We have one measure and ordinance. Move the ordinance?
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance amending and reordaining Chapter 32 Taxation Code of the City of Roanoke as amended by amending Section 32-284 levy of tax amount, Article 14 Tax on Preparation Food and Beverage, Chapter 32 Taxation Code of the City of Roanoke as amended, and adding new Section 32-285.1, compensation for collection, Article 14 Tax on Prepared Food and Beverage, Chapter 32 Taxation Code of the City of Roanoke as amended, to provide for a limited-time increase in the tax rate levied for the food and beverage tax, and to provide a discount to sellers timely paying such tax, respectively, providing for an effective date, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. McCoy. And just to further clarify, the proposed ordinance before us includes a rate increase of 1%, an increase from 5.5% to 6.5%, and then it also includes a 1.5% credit that was mentioned at the beginning of the ordinance. All right? Comments and discussion by council? Mr. Volleson?
It gives me no pleasure to vote today to increase the meals tax by 1% to a total of 6.5%. Unfortunately, this was an increase in revenue we need due to the deferred maintenance and other funding priorities we must correct. For some perspective, Fairfax County is increasing their meals tax by 4% this year, and by going up 1% on our meals tax, Roanoke is average around the state and among our peer cities, not the highest in the state, as was previously reported. Restaurateurs, I want you to know that I hear you. As many of you know, I grew up in a local restaurant, and I understand the burden this may place on you during a time of great uncertainty. It is my hope that we may be able to lower the meals tax rate in the near future. There are several opportunities for revenue increases in the next year or two, for example, a possible taxation of cannabis if we have a governor who does not veto a legal marketplace again. This is also why we are implementing the 1.5% discount for good actors who pay their meals tax on time. I appreciate your investment in Roanoke, and we want to acknowledge our partnership with this program. I would also like to see our economic development team work on a publicity campaign to help increase your business during this time. Thank you for your continued partnership and service to our citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Volleson.
I have a question.
When the clerk read the notice, it says limited time. Can you explain to me what that means?
Can you reference?
It's in the beginning paragraph.
Oh, yes. What my understanding is that this is to be reviewed on an annual basis? And if we need to state that in the ordinance itself, we can do that? I'll turn to our attorney for advice on that. As the cover letter indicates, it was the idea that, as drafted, that particular draft, it would be revisited every year to see if it needed to continue. There was discussion previously of whether there needs to be a sunset clause, and there is a draft available, if necessary, that does include a sunset. I'm here to give whatever the wishes of council as a whole are as to how to address that issue, whether it's informally, as drafted and before you now, or whether it's as a formal sunset of two years. Good. Thank you. Does that answer your question?
It answers my question.
Mr. Hagan?
I have a question. If we include a sunset clause, would that still, would that preclude us from reassessing next year?
No.
Okay.
Mr. McGuire?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we consider an amendment to put a formal two-year sunset after two years of enactment of the 1% increase. I hear, I think a couple of things are true. I think we, as Councilman Volleson outlined, have gotten ourselves into a tough situation and need capital urgently to address needs. and need capital urgently to address needs that I do believe and have faith in our city manager and our budget team are looking at. On any given day coming down to City Hall, a visitor to our City Hall may find an elevator out of order, they may find a sign on a water fountain advising them that they should not drink the water. That's embarrassing, I think, and I think that's unacceptable. And that's not even to speak about the poor ADA accessibility that we have in this building. So, we do have major capital needs that we need to address, and I believe that we have some trust to rebuild with our residents. I think that, as Ms. Councilman Volleson outlined, it's really important to me that we spend within our budgets, that we manage our money responsibly, and that we're transparent about that. And I think as difficult as this conversation is to talk about tax raises, I think it's probably healthy for us to do that every so often, and I think the two-year formal sunset forces us to do that in a way that may make us on council uncomfortable. I'll just speak for myself, I don't like conflict. But I think it's healthy for us to have these conversations. There are a lot of unknowns. We may be able to pass a 1% sales tax to fund schools if we get a better governor. We may be able to gather additional revenue through cannabis sales. We may have additional revenue opportunities or savings through solar opportunities in the future. So, I don't discount the need for this money. I don't think that there is some, you know, conspiracy on the city manager or our part to, you know, steal money from the public for, you know, fancy unneeded projects. And I think that we have some work to do to rebuild trust with our citizens. So, thank you for letting me editorialize, but that's why I would make a motion to sunset the 1% raise after two years of enactment.
Second.
Yep. All right. We have a, an amendment to the motion before us. Discussion on the amendment.
I'll, I'll say one thing. I have previously stated at our last council meeting about the sunset, and I've told people in the community in my conversations with them that I'm committed to, bless you, to yearly evaluating, that's what I'm trying to, but yearly evaluating the increase and then acting appropriately based off how we are performing. I just know that my anxiety with the sunset is, we don't know what can happen nationally, we don't know what can, you know, how that can impact our local economy. And so, for us to basically commit to the citizens, because that's what that is, that's a commitment, in my opinion, to reducing that, right? We're going to let it sunset in two years and go back to 5.5%. I would hate for us to come, be back here in two years and tell them, we have to keep it going, or we're not going to be able to sunset it, and then we re, I got to be a sunrise on it again. I just would hate to be in that position. I'd rather us be able to come back in two years, or one year, or three years, and say, hey, we're going to reduce it, because we can do that at any time. We don't have to put a time limit on it, we can do that anytime. So, that's my only opinion and feedback about it.
Thank you, Mr. Nash. Ms. Powers?
I certainly hear what everyone up here has to say, and I know that when we did the meals tax for education, you know, we did put a sunset clause on that. And what that did is that forced us to look at where we were and what we had to do in two years to make up for that. And I just feel like we have 127 restaurants in our city. I think in Roanoke County, there's about 82. I don't want us to have the highest meals tax, because I want people to come and eat at our restaurants and be here in our city. But yet, I can tell you that this has been a very hard decision, and it's not taken lightly to do this. My stepson works in the restaurant business, and my husband worked in food business all his life, so I get it. But everybody up here, I think, really wants to do the right thing, and it's, it's hard to do. But I, I support the sunset clause, because I think it'll make us all sit down and decide, you know, where we need to go and what we need to be doing. It's easy to spend someone else's money, but it takes guts to do the right thing. So, thank you.
Mr. Volleson?
As I've stated before, I'm, I'm in favor of the sunset clause, and I think for the same reasons that Ms. Powers is, and that's accountability and transparency from this, this council. I don't believe we're doing anything wrong by increasing the meals tax. We're doing what is necessary. And so, I do support this going forward.
Comments over here? Yeah. Mr. Hagan?
I hear you, Councilman Nash. Like, absolutely, I think that, or am I supposed to direct comments to you, Mayor? Actually, I just realized that.
They're your comments.
Okay, cool. Um, like, my only concern is that I've seen this time and time again, when we rely on taxes for revenue, right? We get used to that revenue, we plan for that revenue, we incorporate that into our budget, right? Having a set sunset clause as to when this would no longer take effect allows us to start planning now for that eventuality. Right, um, you know, and to your point, if we go into a recession, or a depression, or what have you, um, I think that it is our job to respond accordingly, and we can always address that then. With that said, as many of you all know, I'm very much against the concept of a meals tax, but I would rather see if we are to implement it, to have a set sunset for the reasons I just stated. So, thank you.
Thank you. No comments?
I'll chime in here. I want to say, first of all, I appreciate everyone's input. I'm feeling a bit frustrated that we're discussing a sunset clause today. It would have been more helpful to me to have discussed this earlier in the process. I don't think today is the day to debate the value or merit of a sunset clause, although I hear the value and merit in it. I'm very concerned that we're limiting ourselves by introducing this amendment, not because there's value or merit in a sunset clause, but because we have to look at the whole picture as council of our realities, and we have to evaluate those as we do every year. We evaluate all of this every year. This is my eighth budget cycle. I'm concerned that until we know, or as we know, our other sources of revenue, it is premature to make this kind of a decision. And I think it's important that we remember that, that we reflect on that. I will also add, you know, I support all of our local restaurants. I show up at all of them on a regular basis. I will continue to do that. Our, our food and beverage tax rate is one of the lowest in the state right now. It's not the lowest, but it's one of the lowest. Raising it 1% still puts us well below most of the localities within the Commonwealth. I don't really have much more to add to that, other than to express my frustration, but we do have an amendment before us, and we've had discussion on that amendment. So, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the amendment, which is to include, as I understand it correctly, a two-year sunset clause, which would be the end of budget year 27.
June 30, 2027.
Okay. Did I state that correctly in recalling the amendment?
Yes.
This is just voting, we're not voting on the motion, we're voting on the amendment. Okay? Is everybody clear on that? All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Nash?
No.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
No. And the amendment passes, and that now becomes part of the motion, and Mr. Spencer is bringing around to us a revised motion, which is back before us.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on the motion before us? All right. Make sure everybody has a copy. Madam Clerk, I will invite you to call the roll on the motion as amended.
All right. Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Nay.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Aye.
And Ms. Mayor Cobb?
Aye. And the amended ordinance is passed. The next item is the authorization to transfer funding from the general fund to the capital improvement fund. There is one measure of budget ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
All right. Thank you. Did you get that, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Nash? Mr. Nash.
Mr. Hagan seconded. Would you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the FY 2026 through 2030 update to the capital improvement program, amending and re-eradining certain sections of the FY 2026 general capital projects and grant funds appropriations, and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
Any discussion or comments by council? All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye. And the budget ordinance passes. Item seven is the adoption of a revised school funding formula policy. There is one measure, a resolution. I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Move the resolution?
Second.
Thank you. That was moved by Mr. Volleson and seconded by Mr. Nash.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution amending the school funding policy for funding the city's school division dated May 9, 2011, and as amended, that provides funding for Roanoke City Public Schools to clarify certain adjustments to the amount provided to Roanoke City Public Schools, and adopting the six amended school funding policy.
And just as a reminder, the amendments to this are related to the request for level funding equivalent to fiscal year 25. Discussion. Mr. Volleson?
Yes. I've got another statement. Since 2011, the city council has allocated 40% of most local taxes to city schools. This year, given the dire financial situation we find ourselves in, we had to make some hard decisions about funding. One of those decisions is to level fund our schools at the fiscal year 2025 amount of $106.9 million next year. We know that level funding leads to a roughly $6.7 million funding gap between the needs-based budget that Dr. White presented to the council. Council will ultimately close this gap by re-appropriating $6.7 million from the unassigned fund balance currently being held by the schools, and we do not make this decision lightly. However, any characterization that we are making large cuts or underfunding our schools is nonsense. Any staffing cuts or programmatic changes in fiscal year 2026 are made by the superintendent and the school board, not this council. We are funding the full request of Superintendent White as she presented it to the council.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Volleson. Mr. Hagan?
Um, I hear you, Councilman Volleson. Uh, I think, though, that when we talk about the way that we fund, right, it is important that the school system has the understanding as early as humanly possible. And so, I believe that one of the things, like, wow, we can argue about the semantics if it's a cut, if it's not a cut, if it's level funding, if it's not. I think that one of the things is that when we are up here and we are allocating that money, that will result in cuts, may, excuse me, may result in cuts, which is ultimately up to the school board, I think that we need to be cognizant of that. For that reason, I'm going to be voting no. Thank you.
All right. Others?
I will state that we are still in conversations with the schools about their request for additional funding related to their budget adoption, which occurs June 10, I believe. Those conversations have not concluded, so we are still in conversation with them about that and appropriations that are connected with that. Mr. McGuire?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to ask, I really appreciate everyone that I have heard from on this, and I know this is, um, education is an issue people feel really passionately about, and I do as well, and care a lot about making sure that we continue to keep education as a top priority in Roanoke. Can we let folks know, listening, or, you know, I, I don't like having, I'm going to vote yes on this. I don't like having to deviate, though, in this way, because I do understand the, from the school's perspective, from anyone's planning perspective, you know, you, you hope for continuity, and there's an agreement on how we're going to do something, and, you know, we're changing that. And I understand the frustration there for sure. So, I guess, a couple of questions. One, what is our process and timeline moving forward? We know that we're in a really tough place financially, and we've talked about how this could take us a few years to get out of the situation that we're in. So, this is a one-time deviation from the 40% that we would be voting on for the next fiscal year. When will we have conversations, or what would that process look like if we start, you know, looking ahead? Are we looking at, do we need to look at lowering the funding formula amount? How can people that are paying attention to this sort of start thinking about it and know what to expect? And then also, you know, I'll just throw out there that I know, and I hope that moving forward, I was a little frustrated with some of the communication, but I know that, you know, Ms. Turner, you're really committed moving forward to improved communication. I, I believe that Dr. White is as well. So, how, is there anything you could say to us today about kind of what people could expect next in terms of how we look at the school funding formula?
Well, Ms. Mayor.
Yes.
What I've stated is that we have to look at being physically flexible and not necessarily a fixed allocation. We are going to be having some conversations with the schools relative to the school funding policy, but it's, it's something that we're going to have to work on together. And so, I've committed to that, the mayor has committed to that as well, but it is, in these times, we have to be extremely flexible on both sides.
Well, and I will just remind council that we are meeting, leadership is meeting. We're going to be meeting as council with our school board colleagues in conversation over the next month as they prepare their budget to get some clarity. Over the next year, we'll be revisiting and reviewing the funding formula policy, which we've committed to them, we will do, and any, and the fund balance and how that's related to that policy. So, that's our commitment moving forward, and that's something that I know I've stated consistently, and I know that we all support going forward. So, I hope that helps answer your question.
I have a comment.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I really appreciate hearing that. I knew, I knew that's how you feel. And I guess I just want to say to the teachers out there, I, I know that this feels really tough, because I spend time in classrooms a lot, and if, a lot of classrooms, it really feels like they're just barely holding on, and the, you know, I think we've made improvements in what we pay our teachers. We have work to do to continue to be competitive with surrounding jurisdictions, and we know that our teachers put up and experience things that are different than Roanoke County or Salem, and so we have to compensate them accordingly. And so, I will continue to be really focused on, and it's not my decision, but I can, you know, I think, I would like to see us, it's really important to me that we keep up the classroom funding, you know, class size, making sure that teachers have resources, class aides, those frontline folks that are working in the schools, because I think we do have a wonderful school system, and I'm really proud to live in Roanoke, and I think we just should be proud of it, and we have a lot of challenges. So, I just really appreciate all of the conversation on this, because it's been, it's been heated, and I appreciate that, because I, to me, it says that our community cares a lot about education. So, thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Do you have more, Mr. Hagan? Ms. Powers?
Um, I would also suggest that we do the same thing with schools, that I've asked about our city budget, is that we meet quarterly to see where we are on budget with our schools, so that it's not that we're just meeting a couple of times a year, but we're looking again at, are we on track? Where are we? You know, do we have any surprises that came up? Just so that we're all, you know, understanding where we are each quarter with our budgets, both sides, city and schools. And this, again, has been a very hard thing to digest, and it's, we don't take it lightly. We appreciate- We appreciate our schools, my children grew up in public schools, I know how important it is, and my hat's off to you, as a teacher, I couldn't do it, you do a great job, and we have a great school system, and I think, as we just sit down and we work together, but we need to remember that we are one, and that we need to collectively respect each other. And I do believe we'll get there. We have a great city manager, she just walked into this in January, she's, she's going to help us get through that, Dr. White is smart, too. I think we can get there, but let's just remember that we have to be respectful of each other and what all of our jobs are that we have to do, and budget cuts and these kind of things are not easy. But I can tell you, our taxpayers could not afford, if we had to do things like raise our real estate tax, or raise our personal property tax, they couldn't do it. That'd be the worst thing that we could do to our taxpayers. So, thank you all for all the work that you've done, and we'll get through this.
Thank you. Other comments, discussion? All right, then we, Madam Clerk, I think are ready to vote on the adoption of the revised school funding policy.
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Nay.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the resolution is adopted. Item eight is the adoption of a pay plan for officers, employees, council-appointed officers, and constitutional officers of the city, and authorization for certain salary adjustments and merit increases in monthly stipends for certain board and commission members effective July 1, 2025. There is an ordinance, and I need a motion and a second.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to adopt and establish a pay plan for officers, employees, council-appointed officers, and constitutional officers of the city, effective July 1, 2025, providing for certain salary adjustments, authorizing specific annual pay supplements, providing for an effective date, and dispensing with a second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Comments or discussion by counsel? Mr. Volleson?
I just had a question. I saw that in the pay ordinance, the, the pay for two of our officers is being changed, the date of its effective date is being changed. Does, do we have to go back, because those were set by an ordinance previously? Do we have to repeal that, or change that in any way in addition to this? Or does this ordinance cover that?
This ordinance covers it, specifically references the previous ordinance and amends that date by adopting this, so that it changes the date to July 1.
Thank you, good question. Other questions or discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
No.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez, I'm sorry. Vice Mayor McGuire?
No.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the ordinance passes.
It's 3-3. No, it's 1, 2, 3, 4, 2.
4, 2, 1, and it will require a second reading, which we can schedule for May 19.
All right, thank you. There are some matters that have to, that require a five-person vote, so I appreciate that, and there will be a second reading on May 19. All right, there being no further business to come before the council, this meeting will stand in recess to reconvene on Friday, May 16, at 8:30 a.m. at the Blue Hills Communication Center for a strategic planning retreat for council. We are adjourned.
So, are you saying that for each, like, if a hawk was flying overhead, the way the chickens would vocalize or make a clucking sound would be specific for a hawk?
Yes, absolutely, and I have seen a friend of mine give a fake hawk call, and every chicken looks up.
Let's talk about roosters. They are not very kind, to say the least, they can be quite aggressive. What is it about the mysterious behavior of the rooster that we should know?
Well, if the rooster's your friend, you couldn't have a better one. They're very-